Mr. Betts, we can start if you're ready.
Yes. Good evening and welcome to the Bryan City Council April 6th, May 20 meeting. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us this evening in this special kind of venue. The first thing that we need to do is make a motion regarding the open meetings that we're going to be having here via teleconference. So the first order of business is to address the item of attending open meetings by teleconference, video conference. The Ohio Sub-House Bill 197 was passed by the Ohio Legislature and signed by Governor Dewine on March 27, 2020. The Ohio Bill created Section 121.221, the Ohio revise code to authorize public bodies meet via teleconference and video conference during a public health state of emergency as declared by the governor until December 31, 2020. In light of the COVID-19 crisis and the state of emergency as declared by Governor Dewine and Mayor Slade, I would ask for a motion to supersede and expand the provisions of the Bryan Municipal Code, Section 3.09, which allows for incorporation of state law changes and follow that law as passed, allowing for all public meetings of the City of Bryan, Bryan Municipal Utilities, be conducted by teleconference or video conference as provided under Ohio House Bill 197. Further, any formal action taken by way of motion, resolution, or ordinance shall be given the same force and effect as if the meetings were held under a traditional open meeting under the Ohio Devise Code and the Bryan City Code.
I'll make a motion.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Don?
Yes. Next, agenda item two, need a motion to approve the minutes of March 2, 2020 and March 5, 2020 council meetings.
Don't move.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Don?
Yes. Then item three is hearing of public concerns. I believe that was published in the paper tonight. If anybody wanted to call in and express a public concern, they could.
Yes, Mr. Betts, we have someone on the phone. I'm going to turn them up here and hope that you can hear them. Please state your name.
Jim Lavengood.
Jim Lavengood? Can you hear that, council?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. You're on hearing of public concerns, sir.
Okay. I'd like to know why people are still coming in this now inside that six.
Can you be specific as...
Is there a law by the governor now?
Can you be specific as to where you're seeing them?
Up the street, please stand up further, glasses. I mean, I don't want to spread this damn stuff.
Okay, sir, if they're in front of their own home with the people that live in front of their house, that is permitted. Is that not, is that not what you're seeing?
Well, no, but that's all right. I just want to know if you want to do anything.
Well, right now, I believe that is in the authority of the Williams County Health Department. There is an extra order that is going into effect 11:59 PM this evening. It is a little more stringent. But if people live in that household, they can take walks in groups together. They can be out in their yard together. As non-residents of that house, then it becomes a different issue.
Okay.
Okay.
I saw today when I was out, and I started bringing up your picture.
No, I appreciate that. Council, do you have anything for Mr. Lavengood?
No.
I didn't catch everything he was saying.
I couldn't hear him.
He was, he was expressing concern as it relates to seeing people in his neighborhood with more than four or five people gathered within more than a six.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Have a good evening, Mr. Lavengood. Be well.
Thank you.
So council, we're going to hang out for a few minutes and make sure no one else calls.
Okay.
If you don't mind, since this is the first time, we've got to make sure this works.
Be good to proceed.
Can Rhonda, can you, I think we initially said until 7:10, is that correct?
I believe we gave it fact, didn't we?
Yeah.
No, it doesn't take us.
Three more minutes, which I know is kind of a pain, but it's the only way to legally comply with them. I see I'm in the one dog.
That's it.
She was going to bark. I didn't want her barking.
Well, if you'd give her treats out of your iPhone, I mean, it'd be...
Trust me, she gets plenty. Her first council meeting.
That'll be the front page of the paper tomorrow, okay? Okay, I think we're good enough, Mr. Betts. And if anyone calls, I'll just let you know. How's that?
Andy. Item four is clerk treasure report.
The council representative has declared treasures report for the month of February 29, 2020.
Or any questions or a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes. Then item five, it was an ordinance to authorize the purchase of sodium chloride from ODOT through the state purchasing program. Lori, could you number and read?
Ordinance number 11, 2020, an ordinance to authorize the purchase of sodium chloride, rock salt, from the Ohio Department of Transportation through the Ohio State Purchasing Program for the 2020-21 winter season.
Tyson, do you want to come on?
Go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. Tyson's coming on to talk about it.
Oh, good.
Good evening. This is our annual ordinance to purchase rock salt through ODOT, the ODOT bid. We've done this for the last, I think this will be the sixth year now that we've done it. It's just when we send our request in, they have to have an ordinance approved by council, and that's what this is.
I move to suspend.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Don?
Yes. Item number six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with Holon Brink Excavating for the 2020 street improvement of Mayberry Drive from YMCA to Center Street. Let me read the number and read, Lori, please.
Ordinance number 12, 2020, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Holon Brink Excavating for the project known as 2020 Street Improvement of Mayberry Drive from YMCA Entrance Center Street, Bryan, Ohio.
Good evening, council. I can give you a couple, a little bit of information on this project. We received two bids, and it was quite an interesting process. We actually received them outside the building, and Lori opened them out in the parking lot. So it was quite a sight to do. We've never done that before, but two bids. Holon Brink Excavating was the lowest. I have not worked with them here at the City of Bryan, but I have worked with them in the past, and I have no issues with them. Just for record, this project should start around July, middle of July, and end by the end of September, so we can stay between the baseball and soccer seasons. But depending on what happens spring sport wise, if they've got an opening, maybe we can open it up a little bit earlier, but we're not real sure. But with that, I request you suspend the rules and authorize this project to proceed.
So they are currently working?
Holon Brink is not working. No, they're working somewhere else, but not for us.
No, I mean, but they are, they are working. They're not shut down.
Right, absolutely, yeah. Their utilities contractors are typically essential in this last, especially with government water, sewer, health, life, and safety.
This is just finishing up that, the road in the park from where you stopped, where they stopped a couple of years ago.
Correct. It starts there near the Y entrance and then ends at Center Street where the boulevard is.
Okay, the curbs and sewers and...
curb and gutter and new parking along the side, just like what's typically right there.
Okay. I move to suspend.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item seven, resolution ratifying the agreement between the City of Bryan and Ohio Patrolman Benevolent Association detectives and patrol officers between the City of Bryan and the Ohio Patrolman Benevolent Association sergeants and lieutenants declaring an emergency. Lori?
Resolution number 17, 2020, a resolution ratifying the agreement between the City of Bryan and the Ohio Patrolman Benevolent Association detectives and patrol officers, and between the City of Bryan and the Ohio Patrolman Benevolent Association sergeants and lieutenants declaring an emergency.
Council, did you have any questions about these contracts?
I didn't.
Okay, I would like to thank Chief Chapa, Lori Rhodey, Attorney Rhonda Fisher, Councilman Betts, and former Councilman Wieland, as well as the union representatives for their help in getting this contract ratified. And with your acceptance, we'll be able to send this to the union for their signature to get it ratified.
I motion to suspend.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item eight, seasonal part-time employees, Parks Department.
Good evening, council. In front of you, you should have a letter to hire John Hall and Kyle Root as seasonal part-time employees. They were working on a 30-day hire when we decided to start sending people home. So they actually only worked, John worked two days and Kyle worked one day. I'd like to put them on as seasonal part-time. We will need help mowing and those kinds of things as we start to move forward and hopefully start to come out of this process.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Thank you.
Appointments for the Park Department.
In front of you, you should have two appointments to our tree commission. Phil Fix has come off our tree commission and so has Melinda Lemmons. So therefore, I would request that you would appoint these two numbers to replace those outgoing members.
I motion to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Thank you.
Dance change with fire department, item 10.
Good evening, council. Before you, you have three of our probationary volunteer firefighters who have completed their firefighter one training and certification. And in accordance with the volunteer pay ordinance, I would like to submit them to you for a pay increase from range one to range six.
I'll move to approve all three.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 11, liquor permit.
Yes, council, in front of you, you have a liquor permit changing the ownership for the Bryan Shell. This is once again, if you would require a hearing in our county seat, which would be Bryan, Oregon, or house, or I'm sorry, in Columbus, we would have to signify that. Otherwise, we just need a motion to approve the legal waiver of the hearing to not request hearing, sorry.
I'm motion to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes. Item 12, accepted award from Arbor Day Foundation.
Dan, do you want me to do this, or do you want to get back on?
If you don't mind, you have the information right in front of you.
I do. I would like to congratulate the City of Bryan on earning the recognition of 2019 Tree City USA and also for the continued support. Obviously, this program is run under person rec, Ben Dominic, Chris Wheeler, and our corporate co-chair have a lot to do with this, and the tree commissioner himself. There are a lot of people that work really hard for us to continue to get the Tree City USA, and I would like to completely thank them. But this letter came from the Arbor Day Foundation. With that, Mr. Betts, you can unofficially go around the room, I guess, if that's...
Yeah, before I do that, Lori, I've been thinking about this the last week or two, and it's not, I'm not going to put you in the spot. Just, I'm just curious, do we have any financial forecast as to guestments as to the loss of revenue due to the COVID-19 impact on the City of Bryan? And if not, is there some way that we can make some guestments?
We're going to be looking at that as a company, and they'll keep for March, for, without flash, as far as there's going to be some money from the venue taxes, we were still keeping the whole being. You go down, but it's going to be incremental, so we're going to have to wait and see how they're coming in by month, whether by quarter. So off the top of my head, state is already saying down the forecast, they're up 2%. So that's what we're going to be looking at at the end of the year.
What's one percent? 20%.
Thank you.
2%.
So does that, if in fact that's the case, do we need to be looking at any? Are we able to absorb that?
As of right now, we have good fund balances in 1%, half percent. We've been pretty frugal all the way along, and quite honest, compared by what I've seen, I think I've ever seen them going into something like this. Because of course, a recession was projected, and the budget committee was very frugal with the way we went to other budgets, and the mayor immediately put a halt to any type of non-emergency spending. As one, in fact, we're going to be, you guys are going to have to get together and decide on that after a period of time. I want to reevaluate companies and start going.
Is there, are there things that we could be doing to help our business?
If you cannot pay your utilities, communicate that. If you cannot pay your mortgage, call your banker and communicate that. There are programs that your accountants and bankers can help you understand and receive, but you have to communicate with them early and often. And all of those people are still working. As far as the RLO, you know, there are, if they're having issues with making those payments, they can call City Hall, and we can connect them to Dennis Miller and Defiance. We have not been asked for any loans in the last week or two. Ms. Leatheren sits on that as the council representative, so she would know if there were a new request. And if there were, we would have a meeting similar to this, but it doesn't have to be open to the public. Obviously, there's some privacy issues if we would open that up. We're going to have to all kind of band together. And in speaking for myself, my husband has been volunteering as tribute to the grocery shopping and also to get takeout most of the time. I feel it's responsible on my end, because I do come in contact with a lot of our first responders to not be out in the masses right now. So if business owners aren't seeing me, it doesn't mean you aren't seeing a family member of mine. And I would encourage everyone, if you can get takeout during this time, if you can do those things. Our small businesses were really making a lot of headway, and I was really proud of the entire community and what was going on in the main streets and outskirts of that. But they're going to need some help to get through this. It's going to be really hard. And we don't know, you know, when the turn is going to, I mean, we don't know when it's going to turn back on. And so there's no way to forecast. It's similar with dollars right now with finances of City Hall. We've suspended a lot of non-emergency spending. There is some stuff that still needs to be purchased. But until we can get a better picture of when we're going to turn this economy back on, when this slowing of the curve has happened, when the state starts reacting in a way that gives us indication, it's hard for us to do a lot of determinations right now.
Are we aware of any local banks that are, I mean, Governor Dewine and Lieutenant Governor Houston have been talking about state loans and federal to state loans for small businesses that they need to go through their local banks? Are any of our local banks aware or knowledgeable of any of those loans that are available, or is it too premature?
It's my understanding that they're knowledgeable. I think the biggest problem that we're finding even here is that the rules of the game are changing daily. Interest rates change. Apps are being read after they're passed to understand. So I think that they're knowledgeable. I think that, I have actually heard of businesses that are successfully applying for either the payroll. It's called a PPE, something, I'm sorry, my acronyms, I only hear PPE right now. But there's, there's some payroll funds available that my understanding is to keep your employees on. It can be waived as a grant at the end of this. And then obviously, some small business loans that are available as well. But I think the biggest thing is, again, we put our pride to the side, and if we ask for it, we're, we're just going to have to all come to terms with that.
Another large factor too, when it comes to your income taxes, is keep in mind what they're paying in 2020, which has of course been deferred off until the deadline of July 15. Or what they're paying for in 2020 is on 2019. We raised some tax revenues on 2019. We won't see the full impact of this, Mr. Betts, even until next year. We'll see the holding drop off, the rebound question. But 2021, we're going to see a new app, people being out of work for this long as well, respect it under any objection.
Okay, thank you. And mayor, you, since you dropped this off, it sounds like a stupid... I'm, it's, sounds like a stupid question, but since I don't know, it's not that stupid, I guess. All the items to sign, where, on what, it looks like maybe there's twelve, fifteen places. It says council president. Is that what you want me to sign and put out in the ports for you to come pick up?
Not those documents. Lori, right now, has the originals. And so I will sticky note them and sometime tomorrow, I'll send you a text that I'm leaving them on your doorstep. So the ones you have right now are not the originals. You do not need to sign those.
Thank you. I was wondering about that. Thanks. Well, we can go around now, same order, I guess. Jim?
Sure. Uh, I just want to say thank you to all the first responders, uh, the hospital staffs in Williams County, our government agencies and Governor Dewine for your guidance and continued support, uh, through these unprecedented times. Uh, we'll make it through it, through this pandemic, uh, together, but we need to continue to abide by the guidance set forth, uh, by our state local governments. Uh, wash your hands regularly, uh, try to stay home as much as possible, avoid large crowds at grocery stores and, uh, practice social distancing. Uh, my thoughts and prayers are with everyone here. Uh, I wish I could say that the worst is behind us, but nobody knows. Uh, today, the chamber has turned on all the lights around the square, uh, for hope. Uh, please go visit. And, uh, last but not least, uh, happy birthday, Williams County. Thank you.
I think next is Rick, isn't it?
Yeah.
Rick's muted.
Rick, unmute yourself, please.
Sorry about that. Uh, I, I want to echo the same sentiments as Jim mentioned. Um, absolutely, the social distancing. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Leibengood for, uh, bringing that to our attention as well. Um, just everybody stay healthy. I, I want to thank Dennis Harrison and Erica Lewis for their willingness to, uh, serve on the Tree Commission. And I want to congratulate Kara Bach, William Douglas and Zach Mersthorff for getting their fire one certification and their promotion. And like I say, everybody stay healthy and we will get through this. Thank you.
Uh, isn't it, yes, and Judy?
Yes. Um, first, congratulations to the Parks and the Tree Commission on their recognition that they got. That was pretty nice. Also, thank you to Valinda and Phil for their service on the Tree Commission and good luck to the two new ones, Dennis and Erica. Congratulations to the firefighters. I also would like to say my personal thanks to the Mayor and Brian Wieland and Don for helping set up this, uh, my computer for this evening because you, I couldn't have done it on my own, I'll tell you. I told them earlier, it's teaching an old dog new tricks. So thank you very, very much for that. Also, I add my support to everybody. Stay safe, make smart choices. Have a good evening.
I'd like to interrupt and say Judy, you did an amazing job and we're all really proud of you.
Ms. Barrett?
I'm going to say the same as the other three. Please practice social distancing. Um, keep the crowds to a minimum, do what you're supposed to do, follow the rules. Make one trip to a grocery store, not five a week. That way you can stay home as much as possible. And I'm also proud of everyone and I'm very proud of Judy too. She did this. That's awesome. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Uh, Lori, I think is next.
Um, in addition to the first responders and of course, our other staff, especially the address therapy therapists, nurse doctors and the cleaning crew, of course, that are keeping those hospitals sanitized for all of us. I think they have the grocery clerks, the, the truck drivers. I, I am just stunned at the people that are out there repeating and, uh, never hear a single complaint when we've had them burned into the store or anything else in this world. So, um, I want to continue social distancing, continue to be back to work as possible.
Ms. Fisher?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to add that I was glad that Mr. Leibengood called in with his concerns. But the public needs to realize that every time there is a complaint, that has to go to the Health Department to be investigated. If the Health Department feels the need, they can file charges. They have not done so at this point, but there's no saying that they won't if the need arises. With that said, the Health Department is already overwhelmed. So if everyone would please abide by the health regulations that have been laid out by the governor, it will relieve some of the stress on the Health Department. So please follow the social distancing out in public. Um, John, to just follow up a little bit on your question about the local businesses. We have been in contact with some of our small businesses, um, for relief and also direction to the banks that I believe are helping with regard to the Check Protection or Payroll Protection Act. It's a ten thousand dollar forgivable loan if they use it for payroll purposes. Uh, it's a, I think a point zero five percent loan. But yes, there have been direction both from the city administration, from the website and from WEDCO. So we are trying to do what we can to help them and get them off in the right direction for those assistances. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor?
I have a couple of things. Um, first of all, I am very appreciative of this council. You guys have let us do the work up here under a really uncertain time. Um, you've supported us in some of the day-to-day operation changes that have gone on. Every time I've called, you've been positive, which I need because quite frankly, some days aren't always positive up here just because of the rapid changes that we deal with. Um, we're all working really well together. I'm proud of every department head in every city and BMU employee that we have. Everybody has risen to the challenge. Everybody is working hard to make sure that we are social distancing, to make sure that when we're not needed at work, we're not coming in. Uh, when we are needed at work, we're coming in. Um, but there's been a couple of things that have come up. First of all, since some of you aren't working, does anybody have an issue with changing these meetings to five P M. during this time? And the only reason I ask is because it's kind of nice to have the cleaning come through, the cleaning crew come through here and know that the people walking in are coming to a clean building and having it at seven kind of dures up the, the doorknob.
I, with that, Mary and Rick can comply, well, I'm sorry, and Judy.
I can make, I, I can make it happen. I'm okay with it.
Unmute yourself, please.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Thank you so much. And then the last item I have, um, we have been talking with, uh, Jim Watkins, the Health Commissioner. Um, we have been talking as department heads. We've been talking as leadership here. I cannot tell you how many daily complaints I get personally about the parks and people being on playground equipment, even though when the first order happened, we put signs up that clearly state the playground equipment is closed. Um, groups of individuals that do not live in the same household clustered together on basketball courts, tennis courts, frisbee golf. And my concern is that this order that comes down at midnight tonight is really clear on, um, police forcing the issue. And I don't want to get to that point. So one, I'm putting out a plea to the Brian community. You do not live in the house with the person you're at the park with. You probably shouldn't be at the park with them. And if you are, you must stay six feet apart. Um, we're going to get to where we don't have a choice. And unfortunately, I do see families, you know, in groups that there's a different reason for every person. And I'm worried that they're going to ruin it for the lot of everyone. And so I'm just making one more plea to the public that we abide by the governor's orders. Um, today, I asked Chief Chappa, which was hard for both of us, to have a patrol officer go to the park every thirty minutes and kind of scoop people off. I don't want to be that community. Chief Chappa doesn't want to be that community. Our police officers do not want to do that, but we will if we have to. And so I'm asking again for the Brian community to abide by the governor's orders, especially the ones that are being enacted at midnight tonight. We just have to be smart about this because if we're not, we're going to stay on this blaze longer than any of us want to. And then the soonest that we can help the state of Ohio flatten that curve and get on the other side of that curve, the better it is for everyone. Um, but at this point, Council, if any of you have any suggestions, I am certainly willing to listen because it appears that in all my campaign years, half of our community has my personal cellphone number. So they're texting a lot. So... What was that, Mr. Bets?
Resting in Toledo. They've had four arrests today.
I know, sir. I know that they're arresting people in Toledo.
I have no problem with, with enforcing.
I have seen that, Carrie. I, I was out to the park yesterday and walked and there were kids playing where Washington School used to be. There were some playing out there and I don't believe they were all brothers. So I've seen this too. So, and I just keep thinking, what is the matter with these people?
Anything else, Carrie?
Any other council members? Any thoughts?
Sorry.
No, it's okay. No?
Nope.
Okay. All right, Mr. Bets? Yeah.
One real quick thing. Everything that everyone said, I totally support. Um, I, I really appreciate first responders, grocery people, truck drivers, everyone that is essential and, and out there, certainly our healthcare workers, our, our, our Williams County, um, uh, Health Department, I think they're all doing a fantastic job and appreciate them a lot. Um, the only other thing that I would want to add is that I, I believe the people are, I'd have to check with the Williams County Board of Elections, but I'm wondering if people are forgetting that they have to vote virtually absentee. The ones that have voted, that's great, but the people that haven't, please get a, call the Board of Elections. They'll send you a, a very quick form and you send that in and they'll send you a ballot back. So please don't forget to vote. I believe it has to be in by April twenty-seventh or something like that. But don't forget to, and I'm done. Move for adjournment? So moved.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Thank you all. Stay well.
Thank you. Good seeing you.
Seeing you.